Stay in the know and make your voice heard on different projects happening in your neighborhood and throughout Hillsborough County by visiting Hillsborough County's Engagement Hub, the online home for outreach and listening efforts. From parks and recreation projects to roadway improvement plans, your input plays an important role in shaping the future of Hillsborough County. So make your voice heard by visiting hcflgov.net/hcengage.
It's very important to prepare before a storm gets here. That's not the time to start making a plan. Right now is the time to know what your risk is, what your plans are for your family, how to stay informed, and how to get involved and volunteer so that you can help your community before the storm gets here. Take preparedness seriously, as in these past couple of years, we never know how disaster will evolve. If you wait till the last minute, that's when everybody is in there wanting to get those last little bit of supplies. Take your time in making sure that you have all the exact items that you need to put in your emergency kit. That should be able to support you for up to at least seven days. It's important to know your evacuation zone. If we get into a situation where a decision has to be made that you're in danger from the surge coming in that's created by a storm event, that you know when your zone is called that it's time for you to go. Preparedness, preparedness, preparedness. You never know what the hazard is going to be, what the event is going to be, but if you take those basic steps that we talked about, it can apply to any hazard that impacts Hillsborough County and your family will stay safe.
According to the National Geographic, ocean plastic is estimated to kill millions of marine animals and seabirds every year, and scientists predict that by 2050, plastic will outweigh the number of fish in the entire ocean. Plastics often break down into smaller and smaller particles called microplastics, which can be ingested by both animals and people and remain in our environment for hundreds of years or longer. Here are a few helpful tips on how you can help stop the tide on plastic pollution. Tip one: Bring reusable bags when grocery shopping. Tip two: Avoid using plastic straws or use reusable straws when having a drink. Tip three: Drink from a reusable water bottle instead of buying individual bottles. Tip four: Tell your friends and family about the effects of single-use plastics. You can help reduce the amount of single-use plastics by spreading the word and going green. For more information and to take the pledge, visit reducereusetampabay.org.
So you have now completed your emergency plan for your family. How about a plan for this family member? Protect your pets during a disaster by including them in your family's emergency plan. Start by making your pet a disaster kit. Put all paperwork into a large Ziploc bag, including a picture of you and your pet, your contact information, vaccination information, and special care instructions. In addition, you should pack certain items to help your pet during the emergency: a seven-day supply of food with bowls, a travel crate, and your pet's favorite toy. Remember, shelters are the place of last resort. Your plan should include being far away from the disaster's epicenter. But if you do find yourself at the shelter, know the rules. Once at the shelter, your pet will be placed in a designated animal section. This is for your pet's safety, as well as other shelter residents. Knowing the shelter rules helps everyone stay safe during an emergency. For more information about shelters, their location, rules, and how to get ready for a disaster, go to hcflgov.net/staysafe.
Good evening and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners' first Budget Public Hearing. The purpose of tonight's public hearing on the budget is to take public comment on millage rates and the budget prior to the board approving to resolution setting tentative millage rates and a tentative budget for fiscal year '24. The millage rates and budget will be adopted Thursday, September 21st, after our final budget public hearing. In a moment, the Budget Director will read into the record the increase in the aggregate fiscal year '24 tentative millage rate from the rollback rate. We will also receive a brief discussion regarding the status of the tentative budget, after which we will take a public comment. At the conclusion of public comment tonight, the board will discuss any potential changes into the budget. And before Mr. Bricki provides the status of the budget, I believe Bonnie wants to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, tonight's the first of two budget public hearings. These are required by state statute, and you're going to hear a budget update from our Budget Director, Kevin Bricki. Take public comment and discuss the budget and adopt the tentative millage rates and the tentative budget resolutions. And you will announce also the details of the second budget public hearing on Thursday, September 21st. This public hearing was announced on the notice and notice in the property tax parcels, the information that went out from the property appraiser's office, and that was in August. And then next week's budget public hearing will be advertised in the newspaper on Sunday. These ads will include the tentative millage rates and the tentative budget approved tonight. In order to have these ads in the paper by the deadline, we have already submitted them to the newspaper for processing within the newspaper's time requirements. Therefore, we would ask the board to please not to take votes on anything tonight on any of the proposed budget changes. These changes would cause our ad to be incorrectly represented tentative millages and/or tentative budget, thus causing a violation of Florida statutes. Having said that, we encourage any conversation, questions, proposals, flags, information regarding the budget, and any of those proposals discussed tonight. We will prepare for your consideration for next Thursday's public hearing, where the board will adopt the final millages and the budget for fiscal year '24. If there are no questions, we'll turn it over to Kevin to go through the presentation.
Good evening, Kevin.
Thank you, Ms. Wise, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kevin Bricki, Director of Management and Budget. Tonight, the calculated change in the tentative aggregate millage represents a 7.59% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. State law requires that we also describe the reason for the increase over the rollback rate. The budget under consideration tonight reflects, in part, normal as well as recently heightened inflationary increases in the cost of doing business. It also reflects the need to provide local government services to a growing population, which includes ongoing funding for transportation and fire rescue services, statutory and contractual commitments, union contracts, technology upgrades, constitutional officers, and certain other county needs. With that, I'll provide a brief presentation and overview of the budget. Tonight, the fiscal year 2024 tentative budget, total budget, is $9.033 billion. That's a $537 million increase over the FY '23 adopted budget. That $537 million is largely accounted for by an increase in $73 million for elected officials, constitutional officers, and other outside agencies; $125 million for the new hospital-directed payment program, which is essentially a hospital assessment which is passed through us to the state in order to meet that program; enterprise reserves rose about $235 million. That largely has to do with timing issues about their future capital program as they look to expand capacity needs; and also, an increase in indigent healthcare reserves of $144 million. Indigent healthcare reserves are quite healthy, and we are looking at those reserves as revenue has exceeded expectation and those reserves have built up. We're looking at those reserves, the flow of revenue compared to the needs of the program, and we plan on coming back with more discussion with you on that issue. Property tax millage rates. The individual millage rates are unchanged from FY '23. The countywide general fund millage rate is 5.7309 mils. The unincorporated area general fund millage rate is 4.3745 mils. And that compares favorably the unincorporated rate, which funds municipal-type services. That compares favorably to the three cities, which range from about 5.7 to 6.455. Some highlights in the budget as well, other highlights. From FY '07 to FY '23, our population grew by nearly 25%. The county administrator's organization has 515 less positions than FY '23 compared to FY '07, a decrease of 7.8%. Forty-three new positions are in the tentative budget, net positions in the tentative budget for FY '24. Twenty-eight of those are in fire rescue. Over that period, FY '07 to FY '23, fire rescue has added 320 positions as we've had some new fire stations over that time. That represents a 34.1% increase. Excluding fire rescue, county administrator organization positions are about 835 less from FY '07 to FY '23, a decrease of about 15%. So that's 17 new positions excluding fire rescue in FY '24. Some other highlights: fire rescue. In the budget, there is a new fire station, Progress Village South Fire Station and the related staffing; a new sheriff training facility and emergency management uses in that same facility; additional funding for roadway pavement preservation program. We've had increases in our insurance costs, property insurance, health insurance, liability. We have some park site renovations; and employee compensation and benefit enhancements. Since the recommended budget, we've had some changes. The $7.6 million in flags that you approved at the July 27 reconciliation public hearing; revised property appraiser valuations, they were slightly less than our expectation. We update estimates of carryforward balances. Some of that is to do with carryforward of some capital budgets due to supply chain issues, and a reduction in the estimated size of the new hospital-directed program. So our calendar compared to one I've spoken to you recently is looking shorter. Tonight, of course, is the first public hearing where you'll adopt tentative budget and tentative millage rates. And then a week from tonight, September 21st, there's actually two public hearings at six. There is the final budget hearing, where you'll adopt the final budget and final millage rates, and there will also be a capital improvement program public hearing as well. So with that introduction, I would say that the tentative budget tonight reflects the county administrator's recommended budget as amended by those updates and corrections, since the recommended budget was delivered on July 12th, and the FY '24 tentative budget is balanced, and the county continues to maintain its general obligation AAA bond rating. And the tentative budget you will vote on tonight reflects investments that are consistent with these focuses that I've talked about. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that you accept public comment at this time.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. This time, the board will go into the public comment portion of the agenda. We have 22 individuals that have signed up this evening. Each person will be given three minutes. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. The first three speakers this evening are Clay Hollenkamp, followed by Lee Barks, and then Bernice Powell Jackson. Good evening, sir.
Hello, my name is Clay Hollenkamp. Thanks for the opportunity to address this board. I come before you today to oppose the proposed reallocation of the county's arts and culture budget now and into the future. Last week, you heard a lot of information about the economic benefit enjoyed by Hillsborough County as a result of the many arts and arts organizations that operate here. What you didn't hear so much about were the cultural organizations benefiting from three of the four grants at risk of being defunded. I want to highlight just a few of those. McDonald Training Center, an organization that helps educate, empower, and employ people in the disabled community, received one of these grants in 2022. The South Shore Chamber of Commerce produced its best fest with one of these grants. The Italian Club, Centro Asturiano, and an organization called Enterprise in Latinas produced multicultural festivals with the help of these grants. Liberty Manor for veterans received grants in both '21 and '22 to produce events. Car shows in Plant City, food festivals in Wy Mama, holiday events in Tampa, family fund runs, suicide awareness events, and many more were all supported by this budget. In fact, in FY '22, '23 alone, these three grants helped produce 63 community events. And in the past five years, that number is over 200. Many of these were either free and open to the public. Most of them were free and open to the public. It's been pointed out that county residents want to see their tax dollars spent wisely. With a county population of about $1.5 million, the cost for each individual of this budget is about $3 per year. I realize we have to be concerned about our county's infrastructure, but these grants and the events they make possible serve to strengthen our social infrastructure. They guide our community towards a more amiable existence and make possible the kind of ties between strangers that ensure trust, collaboration, and peace. I imagine you've seen the list of these organizations and grants over the past few years, but just in case, I emailed it all to you this afternoon. When you review it, or maybe you already have, I expect you will find an event that you wouldn't want your vote to cancel, and that's what it comes down to for many of these organizations. Some of these smaller organizations will not produce events without the support of the county. Please vote to maintain the arts and culture budget so that all county residents might continue to enjoy the economic and social benefits that this money makes possible.
Thank you, Mr. Hollenkamp. Appreciate your comments. Lee Barks, followed by Bernice Powell Jackson, and then Cheryl Henley. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Lee Barks, a member of Palmasia Presbyterian Church, a member Congregation of Hope. Three points. Every person and every family in Hillsborough County needs decent housing they can afford that includes working families and seniors with low and very low incomes. We believe this is in your self-interest as county commissioners because it's in the interest of tens of thousands of your constituents. Two, affordable housing also allows us to address the mental health crisis by combining housing with permanent supportive housing, and that is housing with case management for residents with serious mental illness. Creating more affordable housing can also lay a foundation for creating this subset of permanent supportive housing. We welcome further conversations with each of you who will meet with us to share our data on how this can save the county thousands and even millions of dollars. Three, in recent years, our county has benefited from great economic growth, yet that also brings liabilities. Statistically, at least 10% of those who move to our region will have mental illness. Only some of their care will be covered by employer-supported health insurance. Without needed support, some of these people will become homeless. Others who do not have mental illness, who work in lower-wage jobs in tourism, retail, hospitals, and as clerks, bus drivers, support staff, still need affordable housing because there has been a commitment from our county to put local funds in the budget for affordable housing. Over the past four years, public-private partnerships are developing needed affordable housing. Thank you, Commissioners Hagan, Cameron Sepeda, Myers, Kemp, and Cohen, for attending the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Uptown Sky. This complex for families with children that have very low incomes, as well as others, has been made possible through gap funding from the HOPE Affordable Housing Act. This funding is not a handout. It's an investment in our community, in ourselves, in our future. Please continue to support the $10 million for affordable housing in the 2024 and 2025 budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barks. Bernice Powell Jackson, followed by Cheryl Henley, and then we have Robert Ballou, who's virtual. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Bernice Powell Jackson. I serve as pastor of First United Church of Tampa and as co-president of HOPE. A decade ago, after listening to members of our congregations and to many community residents, we came to the county commissioners because we knew that our county was experiencing an affordable housing crisis. Through the years, we have had veterans, disabled persons, low-income workers from many professions, retired police officers and teachers, artisans, small-business owners, and concerned people of faith come before you to urge you to make affordable housing a priority for our county, and you listened. You listened because it was the right thing to do, but you also listened because it was a sound decision to make for the economic growth of our county. Without the investment which the county has made over the past five years, 1,100 families would be struggling to pay housing and/or living in unhealthy and substandard conditions. These are workers in our hospitals, in our hotels, in schools, in our banks, in our nonprofit organizations, in our sports and entertainment venues. These are our seniors, our disabled citizens, our children. Without the county funds, state, federal, and private funds would not have been able to be leveraged. We know, and you know, that there are still thousands of low-income families in our county desperately in need of affordable and safe housing. We all know that our county's inflation rate remains one of the highest in the whole nation. We all know that rents continue to increase, making the pool of those struggling to pay increasing rents only larger. Every study tells us that the only solution to the housing crisis is to increase the supply. Currently, $10 million has been recommended in the county '24 and '25 budget for affordable housing. These funds are protecting the livelihoods of hundreds of families through the development of private-public partnerships and help the county to access additional state and federal funds for the creation of quality, affordable housing. This investment is good for families, it's good for businesses, it's good for schools, it's good for the whole community, so it's good for the county. It leverages other funds which make possible to build needed affordable housing in our county. The $10 million should be approved for affordable housing, not moved for other purposes. The need continues to exist more than ever. Please don't take your foot off the gas pedal now. Please help us to continue to invest in the people who need the help the most in our county.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Cheryl Henley, followed by Robert Ballou, who's virtual, and then Carol Ditmar. Good morning, or good evening.
Hello. I'm Sherri Henley from St. Mark's Episcopal Church. I know a family at St. Mark's. I've known them for 20 years. When they arrived, it was parents and three little girls. In the first 11 years that I knew them, they moved 11 times. They had different neighborhood and a different school every year. Needless to say, those girls did not graduate from high school. Today, those girls are in their 20s. They have their own families, and they are all working low-wage jobs, working paycheck to paycheck. Two of them have moved out of county, looking for lower rent. One of them has a house, a small house, near I-275, and it recently was sold. One of them has a house, a small house on, near I-275, and it recently was sold, and she was negotiating with the new buyer. They wanted to raise her rent from $1,200 a month to $2,200 a month. She negotiated with them. She got it down to $1,500 a month. There's still $300 more a month that she has to pay, but she really didn't want her children suffering all the moves that she had made as a child. Also at St. Mark's, I have a friend who's an older woman in her mid-80s. She had a one-bedroom apartment up on Van Dyke that she enjoyed, and they started raising the rent. She'd been there over 10 years. They started raising the rent, $100 a month, and after a couple of years, she couldn't afford that, so she moved into a studio, and then they raised the rent on that, and she couldn't afford that. So then she's now renting a room from a friend. I also have another friend at St. Mark's who's a married man. He and his wife and adult daughter rent a house. They just found out like two months ago that that house was being sold, and they had no option to stay in it. They had to find something else. At the same time, he was approved and got a kidney transplant. So he is now, in the past few weeks, recovering from a kidney transplant and looking for affordable housing that they have not yet been able to find. So I have more stories. I don't have more time right now, so I will be glad to talk to anyone later. But I'm here to ask you to please put $10 million in the budget so we can create more affordable housing for working families like my friends and for the hundreds of other people who are just like them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henley. Robert Balu is virtual, followed by Carol Ditmar, and then Eleanor Saunders.
Hello, Robert Balu. I'm from the University of Chicago.
Good evening.
University of Chicago, University of Tampa. Good evening, Commissioners, and I want to echo what my colleague has been saying. This Affordable Housing Fund, which took us from 2013, it took six years to get it established, and since it's been established, there have been, and $10 million to decide so far, we know that so far, $46 million has been put into this fund. It's been committed to develop at least 1,100 more decent affordable housing units, as well as purchase land for future developments for working families and seniors with low and very low incomes. I'm sure that those of you commissioners who toured the Uptown Sky were impressed. It's a beautiful apartment complex, affordable for folks with low incomes. Unfortunately, the waiting list was, I think, over 1,500. I took a similar tour a few weeks earlier. Also, I want to call attention that since 2019, we've committed $46 million, which has helped so far over 1,100 working families, children, people with disabilities, and seniors. They will have a decent and stable place to call home, leading to a more economically viable, stable, healthy, and safe community overall. Currently, the $10 million has been recommended in the county's fiscal year '24 budget and planned for fiscal year '25 budget. Affordable housing is, we hope that it's continued because it's been doing great work, making up the funding for those developers who need some kind of gap funding to be able to make their developments affordable. And that's been working great these past four years, and I hope you will continue that. I yield my time to the next speaker.
Thank you, sir. Now, we have Carol Ditmar, followed by Eleanor Saunders, and then Cecilia Yocum, who's virtual. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carol Ditmar. I have been a Hillsborough County resident since 1985. I come before you tonight also asking that you approve the current recommendation for $10 million for the HOPE Affordable Housing Fund in the 2024 county budget. First, let me say I'm very grateful for this commission and the leadership that you've shown over the last few years in funding affordable housing in Hillsborough County. I think a couple of speakers have already noted, but we now have a track record which clearly demonstrates this money is being well-spent to support our most vulnerable citizens. However, the tremendous need for additional quality affordable housing is still there. I don't think you have to look very far. I myself know people all along the spectrum. I have friends that are seniors, retired on a fixed income, and they really can't afford what they're already paying for housing, but they can't find anywhere they can go to live any less. And I work with many young people on my job just starting out. They're college graduates, working full-time. None of them can afford their own apartment. They all have roommates to help divide up the cost, which is fine, but it used to be that they could count on one check a month going towards their rent, and then the second monthly check they got could cover all their other living expenses. But now, all of a sudden, it seems like at least it's taking one and a half checks to just even cover that rent. And we all know that 75% of your budget going to housing is not a sustainable option. But my friends, at least, are the lucky ones. They have a roof over their head, they have a bed to sleep in at night, but as we know, there are many more that are out there just on the streets, some working poor, some that have some disabilities, some that have just had some bad luck along the way. And my church has a ministry where we feed the homeless. We're seeing that population grow up dramatically every single week, that there's more and more out there on the street. So we've also heard a lot about many more people moving to Florida. It's a very popular thing to be doing, but that is just going to exacerbate this desperate need we have for affordable housing. Housing is a basic human need, and approving the recommended funding for additional affordable housing will address a critical issue so many in our community have worked long and hard just making ends meet. So I ask that you remember their plight when you make your decision on the 2024 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ditmar. Eleanor Saunders, followed by Cecilia Yocum, and then Sheila Simmons-Tribble. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Eleanor Saunders. I get to be the executive director of ECHO, the emergency care help organization. When you think about ECHO, I want you to think of '75. Now go east from the town of Sasa all the way down to Sun City Center. Last year, we served over 24,000 residents who are hurting and in crisis. We are already trending this year to serve 28,000. Our residents are coming to us, our neighbors are coming to us for things such as one-on-one job coaching, resource navigation, financial assistance, and emergency food and clothing. Last month alone, we served 777 families. Of those families, 101 of them identified as homeless or at great risk of homelessness. Let me be your voice from the front lines. These are working families in Brandon and Riverview, living in their cars, setting up a tent in a county park, and moving every two weeks between Madard and Lithia Springs. We have had a family of seven sleeping in the back of a U-Haul while the dad stays up at night so that his family can be safe while they sleep. We had a family of six sleeping in a pickup truck, leaning against each other like this so they could sleep at night. We have scores and scores of families living in the pay-by-week motels off of 92 and 579. If you doubt it, go there. When the buses go in the morning to pick up the kids, see all the pink backpacks coming out of Masters Inn, the Suites, the Brook, Camp Knox, and Star Motel. We need your help. We just recently helped a county employee. She was working at the licensed branch right there on Falkenburg. She was in her car for three months until we could help her transition into our own apartment. I have no doubt that you guys are elected officials because you want to advocate, you want to speak up. I'm in that same business. I want to advocate, and I want to speak up. Our neighbors are desperate, and they need your help. So when you review your budget, and you pass it, and you approve it, please, please, please do not touch that affordable housing. Your neighbors, my neighbors, are absolutely desperate for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. Cecilia Yocum is virtual, followed by Sheila Simmons-Tribble, and then Jerry Neely.
Chairman, Cecilia did not call in.
Ms. Yocum did not call in? Okay, Sheila Simmons-Tribble, followed by Jerry Neely, and then Carmen Edmonds, who's virtual. Is Ms. Simmons-Tribble present? Okay, Jerry Neely. Is Jerry here? Okay, Carmen Edmonds is virtual, followed by Debbie Brim in person, and then Ram Ramadas. Ms. Edmonds?
Chairman, Ms. Edmonds did not call in.
Okay. Is there Debbie Brim? You're on the clock. I'm just kidding.
All right, then.
Good evening.
Okay, then. I'm here. My name's Debbie Brim. I am a product of being helped by affordable housing. I took sick, had a sickness that crept up on me after years and years and years. I didn't even know I was sick until I almost died, and I lived in a house, and I lost my house. I was hospitalized, and when I got out, I didn't have anywhere to go. I don't have any family, and it's not about me. You helped me, so I'm okay now, you know, and thank you very much for having that budget when I needed it. So now, there are other people. I volunteer at the church, I go to Waters Avenue Church, and I volunteer at the food ministry there. They have a food ministry every day of the week, the well, to feed people, and we see them coming all the time, and I just hope and pray that you guys will, or all of you will keep the budget, increase the budget, whatever. I don't have all the numbers, but I'm hearing them now. I want to just thank you for what you've done for me, and I just hope and pray that you all will keep it in the budget, increase the budget, and help the people that are still in need, and they're everywhere. And we're all human beings, and we all need each other, and to God be the glory. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brim. Appreciate your comments. Ram Ramadas, followed by Willa Peterson, and then Denise Calvanti, I think, is Ram virtual.
Yes, this is Ram Ramadas.
Good evening.
I heard the, good evening, yeah. I heard the Director of Management and Budget, Kevin Brinkley, say in his presentation, he recited demographics and financial numbers from the year 2007 up to the year 2022. He made a bridge between, that lasted like 15 years. He mentioned the population increase, the staffing in the county administrators' organization of the population increased 25% over the last 16 years. The positions in the county administrator's office are apparently 515 less in fall year 2023 than in 2007. There were three points in that slide. The first point and the third point were contradictory. The first point said the county administrators' organization had 515 less positions in the year 2023, and the third point said, on the same slide, said there were 835 less positions. So which one is really true? Is the staffing in the office, county administrator's office less now? Is that true? And by how many is it less? Apparently, the population increased 25% over the last 16 years. The collection from property taxes in 2007 was $80 billion. Sorry, if the assessed values in 2007 was $80 billion. Now, the assessed values in 2022 are $130.5 billion. This is a number which is in your annual comprehensive financial report, also called the CAFR, CAFR dated September 2022. Now, this CAFR is produced by highly reputed organizations, and we can take their numbers as truth. So my question is, how are the administrators going to conserve the people's money? How are you going to return a piece of the revenue back to the people now that the property taxes and the assessed values are higher? Obviously, the collection this year for the county, for the city, for each of these taxing authorities must be higher, so that's my primary concern. As you all know, 2007 was followed by 2008 through 2013, all of them a recession, so we might as well save some money for the future. I end.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Willa Peterson, then followed by Denise, starts with a C. I don't want to mispronounce your name, and then Barbara Tepeki. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Willa Peterson, and I am a member of Bible-Based Fellowship Church. On April 5th of this year, I had an opportunity to record a conversation with Ray Bond, an unsheltered, homeless member of our community. I have been afforded the opportunity to be in the downtown area where Ray Bond quote-unquote "lives." My frequent visits to that area has enabled me to develop a rapport with him and other members of our unsheltered community. He was comfortable talking with me and allowing me to videotape him. Ray Bond told me he receives a check every month. However, it is not enough to cover the cost of rent, even though he receives government assistance and takes on odd jobs. A young man approached me as I was distributing toiletries to our unsheltered population. He was very well-groomed. He asked if he could please have a packet, and I might add, most of the people I encountered there are very polite. I explained to him that the packets were for those who are homeless and living on the streets. He explained to me that he was homeless. He said he has a job, however, because of COVID, he lost his job, thereby losing his apartment, and still is not making enough money to live in a home, so he is homeless. I found out that being homeless doesn't mean that you have to look grungy, because he was very well-kept. The need is great out there, and I'm sure you have seen the need as you go up and down the streets throughout Hillsborough County. So I'm just appealing to you to give careful consideration and your leadership to approving, by approving, the $10 million in the 2024-2025 recommended budget for affordable housing. I can't imagine how devastating it must be to go to work and then have to go home on the street simply because there's no affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Denise, starts with a C. Okay. Barbara Tepeki, followed by Sandra Wright Abin, and then Debbie Hunt, which is virtual. Is Barbara here? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Barb Tepeki. I'm a member of Grace Lutheran and a regular visitor at St. Paul Lutheran, a member congregation of HOPE. At a Board of County Commission meeting in 2020, probably on Zoom, I saw a presentation by the Schimberg Center of the University of Florida. Their study of Hillsborough County's affordable housing needs concluded that we needed over 65,000 units. Since then, the county has set aside $10 million every year to build and renovate affordable housing with the help and contributions of private developers and many nonprofit organizations. HOPE has monitored those allocations. Our lists show that around 1,100 units have been built or are being developed. 1,100 families now have more stable lives and live in safe and healthy places. The $10 million given every year is definitely worth it to them. But remember, in 2020, the county was told we needed six... But remember, in 2020, the county was told we needed 65,000 units. Now, with 1,100 units developed, we are still almost 64,000 units short. I therefore urge the county to continue, or even to increase, the $10 million given annually to build and renovate affordable housing.
All right, thank you. Sandra Wright Abin, Sandra here?
Yes.
Then followed by Debbie Hunt and Pat Cruz, both virtual. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Sandra Wright Abini, born and raised in Tampa. I'm a member of Portico Church, which is a subsidiary of Hyde Park United Methodist. At Portico, we feed on any given Sunday over 100 homeless people. And as the other people have spoken to you, have already elaborated on, there are thousands more out there that need shelter and food. I would like to talk to you about one individual. He's a member of my husband's Bible class. He's a gentleman in his late 70s, born and raised in Tampa. He always worked, but like a lot of us, he didn't make a lot of money, and he didn't save money. So now he lives on Social Security. The apartment he had lived in for many years raised the rent to $1,200 a month. His income is $1,200 a month. That was about three years ago, and since then, he has been in long lines of signing up for subsidized housing and to no avail for him. He has been surviving through the help of the people in the Bible class where my husband belongs, and have been either helping him financially to pay for rent or giving him decreased rent on places that they own. The man can't go on depending on individuals to find a place to live. He's one step from being on the street at his age. He can't work, I know a lot of people our age work, but he can't because he has a very bad background. I found an apartment for him this week, it's the first one I've come. Tiny, little, small, but neat, one-bedroom apartment in back of a house on the outskirts of Tampa. It's actually a trailer, but it was nice. $1,300 a month, that's $100 more than he makes. So like the rest of us here from Hope, we're just begging you to continue doing what you've been doing and help these people. They need you. Thank you.
And thank you. You have Debbie Hunt, which is virtual, followed by Pat Cruz, and then Tiffany Jackson. Ms. Hunt?
Good evening, Debbie Hunt, Executive Director of Hope for Citizens Defending Freedom. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak tonight about your proposed budget. I do have some concerns. I have been told, after talking with a number of county staff, that you are not increasing taxes, and you are not increasing the millage. And that's accurate, as far as I can tell, sort of. What was said tonight is that the property appraiser did what he's required to do by Florida statutes, and he updated our property value information, and that changes everything. So the tune of about $530,000, $30 million, and adding a focus on some areas that do not appear to be necessary at a time when residents throughout the county are making regular adjustments with the crazy inflation. Commissioners, please take this year and truly tighten your budget felt. Really evaluate what is being spent, where and how. Show the residents in this county you are doing the job you were elected to do. It would go a long way to regaining the trust of your constituents. It is your choice, moving forward, to continue taxing your constituents while claiming it's not a tax versus moving forward with the same budget as last year. Your competent team, which I fully support, was unable to spend the resources provided to them due to supply chain issues, which, as you know, continue to worsen rather than improve. You're going to exacerbate the issue by providing additional monies to projects the resources are simply not available to support. Instead, be prudent, reduce the millage rate, and tax them out. Make the budget the same as it was last year. The reduction has already been provided to you by the property appraiser on our term notices. Instead of continuing to tax we the people more, please move funds to the highest priorities for funding. Preservation of our failing transportation and stormwater infrastructure before it falls apart completely. This would be beneficial to all who travel in and around this county. Unfortunately, I understand the need for additional monies to go towards affordable housing, but I'm not sure at what point that stops. It certainly makes no sense to add another $144 million to a reserve fund. I've not been able to wrap myself around how that is helping the constituents. Thank you for your time, I look forward to reviewing adjustments made before the next.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt, appreciate your comments. The next three speakers are all virtual, Pat Cruz, followed by Tiffany Jackson, and then Valerie Mackey.
Can I go?
Pat Cruz, go ahead, Pat.
This is Pat Cruz, hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thanks for the opportunity to share with the, also with the Hope project. I call it a project, we have a lot to do. I represent Islamic Community of Tampa Bay, and I got a little bit anxious when I heard about this, that the possibility of not having money, I thought we'd be adding, not thinking about not having it. Quite frankly, working in the community since I've been here since 1985, working in the community in regards to social services, for the most part, I've seen so much. And affordable housing may seem to be an issue, now it's at crisis level now, but we've always had an issue with affordable housing. You know, we've always had an issue with affordable housing, it's just at a crisis level across this country. And, you know, Tampa being the top, in terms of 44% of the rate, the height, the increase rates for rental property, it's Tampa across this nation, that means it even put us in a more desperate situation. I meet with, I join a lot of different groups, national groups, to deal with not only housing, affordable housing, mental health housing. And when I talk about what Tampa is doing, I am so proud, and they are very impressed. When I say that there's a 10,000 set aside for affordable housing, and they ask, how do we, I mean, they know, but how do we do that, and I give examples of coming together as a community, a collective community of faith-based organizations coming together, we see the problem because we hear it from the families in our congregation, or in our communities, surrounding communities of our religious structures, so we see it. But we delve in as Hope to find the details, to do the research, to solve the problems, because we identify it as a problem. There are so many people right now, if you really want to know how affordable housing is affecting the residents here, you go to the hotels. Not the motels, we know that's always been the case, go to some of the hotels. We have teachers, we have nurses, we have bus drivers, you have people that are making, myself included. When my landlord decided to sell, I couldn't afford an apartment, let alone try to buy a house, because we were outbid by other people coming into our county. So local residents were not even able to bid or have a chance to get affordable housing, even though many of us were under programs, working to get housing, first-time home buyers, et cetera. We were not able to compete with the dollars coming from the north and everywhere else, including people from other countries that were buying properties here. So we don't have anyone to advocate for that, we stand alone, seems to be on that case. Affordable housing affects our families, we have children in hotels that are not in school. I try to get them in the homeless program, but it's very difficult to be living in a room and having, and you don't have your parents there because they have to work.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cruz.
And doing virtual school.
Appreciate your comments, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Last three speakers are Tiffany Jackson and Valerie Mackey, who are virtual, followed by Gerald White. Tiffany?
Hello, yes, Tiffany Jackson.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I am from the community of Billsville. I'm reaching out regarding our recreation center, this is directly for Commissioner Michael Owen. We are in dire need of our community recreation center funding through Parks and Recreation Center. Through Parks and Rec, it seems to be cut for that, as it doesn't appear to be a priority. Not sure why it's not a priority, but we're taxing people out here in the community. And again, we are in, we're just begging, at this point, for our recreation center funding to be reinstated so that we can operate at full capacity on what we need out here in Billsville. So, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I, to the person, if she's still on, I am working on that, and please contact my office directly, and we'll talk to her tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you. Valerie Mackey?
Valerie, go ahead. Valerie, if you're there, go ahead with your comments.
Good evening, my name is Valerie Mackey, and I am also a member of the beautiful Billsville community out in Plant City, which is eastern Hillsborough County. And I happen to be calling for the same reason that Tiffany Jackson just eloquently articulated. We are a proud community founded by freed African-American slaves and home of a historical site, Glover School. We have been advised, as Tiffany mentioned, that our recreation center has been defunded. We are proud homeowners, and we also pay taxes, just as she also said. In fact, we funded, we built the building and donated it to Hillsborough County so that you guys could run the building. So the building itself was funded by our community, which is, in my opinion, one of the ways you can tell that we are totally involved in our community. We, our park was reopened about a year ago, and it was showing signs of growth, only to now be told that it will be closed. And we understand, as you all here agree as well, parks and recreations are necessary for a vibrant community. And do I dare say that it's an integral part in raising healthy children who become contributing members to society. We've been told that 53, there are 53 recreational centers that are there, only 13 are staffed. And of those 13, four of those parks are being, are having splash pads installed. And I don't know if you feel this way, and I have to say that I definitely do. A splash pad, in our opinion, is a luxury. We're just asking that our park remain open and staffed so that our community can go and enjoy. And so we are asking, and like Tiffany said, we're begging that our park remain open. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mackey, I don't know if you heard Commissioner Owen after Ms. Jackson spoke, but he said if you would contact his office, he'll work with you on this.
Yes, and we're already working on a solution to this with staff, so thank you for calling in.
All right, the last speaker this evening is Gerald White. Good evening, Mr. White.
Good evening, Commissioner Kenhagen, good to see you, Mr. Chairman.
It wouldn't be a budget public hearing without you being here.
I look forward to the budget public hearings. First, you know, I was asked from the men at work today, they said, GW, is this a Republican budget? Is it a Democratic budget? What's up, in Hillsborough County? I said, you know, historically, and what I've seen, it's the commissioner's budget. It's the people's budget. It's the citizens' money. Then they asked me, well, what's up, are you happy, or got any issues? I said, no, I don't have any issues. I think the commission have conducted themselves with a balanced hand, a steady hand, a comforting hand, and I'm pleased with that. I'm happy, I read it, I read the budget. But I would ask the citizens to concentrate on the Administrator Bunny Wise's statement, her message to the citizens of this county in the budget report, on how important it is to maintain that balance and take care of their sheriff, take care of fire, take care of the parks, take care of the necessary things as the economy continued to tighten up. And I'm confident that you're going to continue to fund affordable housing. This group, you know, they're, they don't even have to ask the citizens of this county, do they have our support? It's an unequivocally yes, no question about it. So affordable housing should always be at the top of the list. My only concern is the citizens of Tampa. As you know, the city of Tampa voted down their budget that the mayor submitted. And I am concerned that the people of Tampa, and if you look at the citizens of Hillsborough County, are, is we, are we becoming unequally yoked? Are the roads, I heard a conversation several weeks ago about repairing roads on Columbus Drive from the Reverend. The people of Tampa that lived in the city want to have a good quality affordable life, a safe life as well. So I'm concerned about that. Your balanced budget, don't push any more costs on to the people of Tampa, that's a good thing. But I would, I would hope, as a higher body of government, that you'll work a little bit closer with the city of Tampa. If the mayor can't get the monies that she needs, a resident of Tampa's, my life's going to be diminished, all the people in Tampa's lives are going to go down a little bit because the mayor can't get the monies that she need. I mean, I look at 30th Street near Busch Gardens, it's just, it's ridiculous. That 30th Street between Fowler Avenue and Busch Boulevard hasn't been repaired in years, it's just horrible. It's a disgrace, that road, fix that road if you do anything for me.
Thank you, Mr. White, always appreciate your comments.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, Bunny Wise, way to go.
That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. I want to thank everyone who came down and shared their comments and concerns. Before we adopt the millage resolution, are there any questions or comments from board members? I know the administrator has asked that we not make any changes until our final budget public hearing for advertising purposes, but we can certainly have a discussion on anything. Commissioner Kemp?
I'll be quick, but I did want to thank, it was quite robust public attendance tonight, and you all are just such good advocates, not for yourself, but for this community. And, you know, you've come down here to bear witness, I think, in so many ways to what is happening in Hillsborough County, and we can hear the statistics, and we can see it, and we know it's happening, but we appreciate your presence and your caring and watching of the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Chair. So Administrator Wise, you said that you only want suggestions said today, there's no motions, but you need to hear it right now so that you can bring it back on the options for the 21st, correct?
Sure, because any feedback you could give us, then we'll have it prepared for you for that presentation at the next week.
Okay, so if I wanted to see, or if, yeah, if I wanted to see, do you need to advertise, if I want two different options about the same thing?
You can give us any options, we're just asking you all not to vote today, but absolutely, give us any options that you would like us to bring back, absolutely.
I would like to see option one of reallocating the funds that were dedicated in 19-19 to PSOC. In the wake of Hurricane Adelia and the death and destruction that we've just seen, I don't believe that we can afford any longer to go without getting immediately up to date with their Public Safety Operations Center. It's only a matter of time before we stop dodging bullets, this is two in a row that we were lucky, but we just had extreme devastation below us and to the north. And option two, in, in the sense of, I would also like to work on the affordability of housing in Hillsborough County, is lowering the countywide millage weight by that same $10 million so that we can keep as much money possible into all 1.55 million people's residents of Hillsborough County's pockets without the government taking it from them and needing our help in the first place. So those are two options that I would like to see of ordinance 19-19, or Resolution 19-19 funds. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank everyone for being here today, too. I, I think it's really important, when we're talking about affordable housing, to talk about what's going on this year. I think it's really important that this board and the public understand that this is the year of affordable housing. The Republican-led legislature and governor signed into, signed Senate Bill 102, which gives a windfall. Now, I've been very vocal that I'm not a real big fan of that bill, but it gives a windfall for affordable housing. There are two affordable housing projects going on in my district that this board would not have approved, that are going through the Live Local Act. On average, $300 million goes into that Sadowski Fund over the last thirty years. This year, $711 million. I looked it up, and Commissioners can correct me if I'm wrong, thirty percent of the CRAs go for affordable housing as well. This year will be a windfall for affordable housing. And while I really appreciate everybody being here today, and listen, I don't fault the arts, I don't fault Hope and great organizations like this for coming here and trying to get all they can for what's important to them. And trust me, there's no one on this board that has had to defend people that are losing their homes, fight landlords that I have in my, in my private life. I understand, I've held hands of people that are losing their homes, whether it be rent or foreclosure, and it is heartbreaking. So, I would like to maybe propose, Ms. Wise, on the, a way that I think we could go about this, that I'd like to propose jail improvements through the CIT. That's about $10 million that's spent on those jail improvements. Does that sound about right?
Ten, yes.
$10 million, okay. So, it's possible that we could allocate this $10 million to jail improvements, which would free up the CIT for us to either, the PSOC's a good idea, I'm open to that. And also, we could use that for road improvements, paving sidewalks, correct? That would take it out of countywide, that could be used for the unincorporated part of Hillsborough County?
Yes, because then you could then use the CIT for those other improvements that you mentioned.
Okay, yeah, I would like that to be an option and allow the board to really look at. I mean, we could allocate probably $5 million of it to PSOC, $5 million of it to road improvements, or however this board wanted to go if they decide to go in that direction. But, but I would like those to be options, along with what Commissioner Wustel suggested. But, but again, I think it's important that, listen, Hillsborough County spoke in this last, last election, they were, everywhere I went, they said, roads, infrastructure, and public safety have to be to the forefront. And this board cannot continue to ignore that. And this is an opportunity to do that. While I completely understand, everybody's here concerned, affordable housing, we do have an affordable housing crisis, but we have to reprioritize as a board, roads, infrastructure, and public safety, and put that to the forefront, and this is an opportunity to do that. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, thank you. So, just to be clear, I want to clarify this, this suggestion by Commissioner Wustel and then by Commissioner Owens, Commissioner Wustel, you're saying, remove from the budget $10 million that we allocate now to affordable housing? Is that correct?
Resolution nineteen-nineteen is the correct one, correct?
I think that's the number, but yes, that's the one. For $10 million.
Okay, and reallocate that to PSOC, our public safety? That's your suggestion?
Well, there were two options that I would like brought forward to the next meeting. I can restate them. One being towards the Public Safety Operations Center in lieu of all of the hurricanes that continue to happen around us. And two is, if we do want to increase housing affordability for everybody in Hillsborough County, because it's countywide, that would improve the livelihood of people in the city of Tampa as well, this suggestion was made, then we just lower the millage rate for the countywide funds. Those two options.
Okay. And Commissioner Owen, you're agreeing that we should also end the, our local investment in affordable housing, the $10 million?
That's, I thought I was crystal clear, and that's not what I said. To end it would be to get rid of the ordinance. We are talking about one, this year, correct? In this particular budget? So, you're absolutely incorrect, and if you're trying to put words in my mouth, I don't know how much clearer I could be. Ms. Wise, did you understand the options that I gave?
Well, it was for the $10 million, and I guess the only thing, I just want to confirm, perhaps $5 million to PSOC and $5 million for road or sidewalk improvements.
Well, I would like to leave that option for this board. It could be $10 million to PSOC. It's the first I've heard about. I think it's a good idea, so I just incorporated that. My, my idea or suggestion was to put it towards jails, and then that would free up $10 million from the CIT to go into roads, infrastructure, and public safety.
I'll call it three A and B. How about that?
Three A and B, thank you.
Okay, and I wasn't trying to put words in your mouth, I was just trying to clarify and understand what suggestions you were both making, so for next week. But my suggestion would be, first of all, you know, I tried to find out about the Public Operations Safety Center. We're investing in it now. I don't even know that we have a project with a dollar attached to it or planned at this point. So, it would seem premature to do that. I'll just say that for next week. The other suggestion was roads, as we've gone through before, though, the countywide dollars cannot be used in unincorporated roads, which are, you know, what we talk about so often, unless they are countywide. Infrastructure can't be used to, in the county, in unincorporated county, to build our fire stations, and very limited application in terms of what we could use for roads.
Yeah, a point of order. We've had this argument.
I know, Commissioner Owen, just let, Commissioner Kemp, please, continue.
Thank you. And so, but I would, I would, if we, and jails as well, we've been funding them on a regular basis. I've looked into the pods from that. We've been funding, because they can't even, they don't really have the capacity to apparently remodel more than four a year. There's 24. We've been doing $10 million, I think, on a regular basis a year for that. But if we have something that someone wants to fund, I think we can look. I'd just like to point out that we do have reserves that have grown almost to the 25% range, which I think is the top range, between 20 and 25%, so that we have additional dollars there that could be used in either budget and could have application for those things. I'd just like to point that out now. So, I don't know if, if that suggestion comes next week. I'd just like to have the information on that, the, the reserve money that we might have available for any project that needs to be, or any project we have scoped out for any of these needs that were suggested. And I'll just, you know, I'm, are, also, you asked if anybody could correct you if you're wrong about the CRAs. The CRAs are just in the city, of course, and the 30%, they try to allocate it, but they can't even find places within the CRAs because they're so small to even build the affordable housing, because you have to have a place to do it, and you have to, you know, be able to find that. And I talked to them, and it's a really big problem. So, they don't really even have that from the CRAs. I would love that, but that still wouldn't fill the need, because our need, as you heard, was we have approximately 1,000, if that's accurate, and 64,000 more to go. It is, it is very critical, and I know that when we did this in 2019, the Tampa Housing Authority, for instance, had a waitlist that they had had open for seven years. They had had something like 25,000 families on that waitlist, or individuals, to try to get help with affordable housing. And what happened is they decided to close the list, it had been going on for so long with people on it for seven years, they decided to close the list and just retire it and open it again, and apparently, within weeks.
Just a point of order, Chair, just real quick. I just, are we debating today, or are we just offering suggestions?
No, we were offering suggestions, but it's, it's in order for Commissioner Kemp's comments are in line. Just, please continue quickly.
Sure. And so, the, the waitlist was, they opened it, and within weeks, they had the same number of something like between 20 and 25,000 people that were desperate for housing. And as we know, as the speakers pointed out, inflation has hit incredible, but it's, it's hit this area harder than anyone else, and it's, or any other area in the nation practically. And it's hit in the area of housing, because we have people coming here all the time. So, I think it's a critical need, and I, I would be looking for other places, like the reserves, if we have critical needs elsewhere that we need to do, and we can still address this critical need for affordable housing.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be real brief. First, I'd like to thank Bonnie Wise and her team, the Budget and Finance Committee, for doing a wonderful job, for presenting us a balanced budget, and also to all of the citizens who have come to share your comments, I mean, great comments. And we, as a board, we're going to make some adjustments. But the most important part, I want all of us to understand, is in the letter that Bonnie sent out with the budget, she talked about two critical things, in my honest opinion, was the rebuff of our financial position and the AAA credit rating that this agency has. And that should mean something to all of us, and I cannot thank staff enough for this budget, because I'm going to be honest, two weeks ago, I looked at the city when they had theirs, and I am so thankful for our behavior tonight toward our staff, our board, that we can come together to discuss our budget, our citizens can come in, not attacking us, but expressing how you feel, how the people that you work with in the community, being an advocate for them, just expressing your concerns to us that they need help. And we realize that, and we're both, should be a board to want to help and continue to help in our community. So, thank everyone for being here.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wustel?
I just, I thought that the points about CRA were pretty good from Commissioner Owen. So, Administrator Wise, could you add some, shed some light on that topic? Is it not true that the city used tens of millions of dollars of CRA to build things like Armature Works?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I do. Is it, is it not true that the city used tens of millions of dollars of CRA to build, renew the downtown city of Tampa area that is selling condos for $1,800 a square foot now?
They didn't use it to build the condos. The CRA money has to be used for public infrastructure.
Right, they used it for that area. And I guess, I mean, we, it's about priorities, and I do feel bad for the residents of the city of Tampa, and I, next year, unfortunately, the opportunity is missed this year, we can't change the millage rates like I wanted to, but I look to reducing their cost of living or trying to, again, at next year's trim rate settings with the tax millage swap rate, because they do need help. But we cannot help the decisions that were made in the city of Tampa with our budget up to a certain extent, other than reducing the countywide trim rate. That's the only real, real meaningful way that we could reduce housing affordability and costs in the city of Tampa. And so, I do, I do know that CRA funds are used, used a great deal for affordable housing. I know that we have multiple programs that go on within Hillsborough County for affordable housing, and it is true that the Sadowski Fund is up near $800 million right now. So, it's, it's not like we're leaving it out to dry, it's just that we're readjusting our priorities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, and thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. First of all, I want to also thank our, our staff for such a, I think, thoughtful and reasonable budget. I, just from the nature of the discussion tonight, there's an awful lot that we're agreeing on together that's not even getting talked about, that's in this very large budget. Two comments about things that have been brought up tonight. First, about the reserves, Commissioner Kemp mentioned it, and I remembered that Commissioner Wustel had mentioned this in the past. Our board policy, to my knowledge, is that the reserves should be above 20% of our annual budget, and it, when the bond rating agencies look at our credit, that's something that they look very closely at, and they look to see whether or not we have the wherewithal and the discipline in order to keep those reserves up. But it is true that over these past couple of years, our reserves have continued to move in a healthier and healthier direction, and we are now, I think, at about 24%. I don't think anyone is suggesting that we take money out of reserves. Let's be very, very clear. No one's suggesting taking money out. But the question of whether or not our contribution for this year could be slightly lower than it has been in the past by a percentage or two, that would still leave us well, well above the threshold that, that we need to maintain the bond rating. I think that's the question that we've sort of been, been moving around tonight, and I do think we should see what those numbers might look like next week. You know, with a budget this size, a very small adjustment might free up some money to do some of the things that have been suggested tonight. I am very happy to hear about the enthusiasm for some of the state affordable housing programs that are out there. I'm not yet ready to declare victory and, and pull our funding, but, but I think that we can preserve that and still perhaps put additional resources to some of the things that have been, you know, particularly public safety and, and emergency preparedness, very, very important items that have been highlighted, and if we can, if we can do a little bit more for that and for infrastructure, I'm, I'm totally willing to be supportive of that. So, I'd like to look at that next week when we come back.
All right, thank you. And I just want to say, well-stated Commissioner Cohen, in that, you know, we may have disagreements on a couple of items here tonight or on our next budget public hearing, but the fact that we haven't discussed, you know, probably 98% of the budget, I think is a testament to the fact that, that we're on the same page on most of the items here. And I can tell you from experience, having lived through a couple of the recessions, that has not always been the case. We've had some very, very challenging times in the past where many governments, including the state, you know, rated reserves and trust funds in order to balance the budget, and this board didn't do that. We maintained very conservative positions, everything from rolling back the millage rate 15 years in a row, to adopting a spending cap, to eliminating over 1,000 positions. It was very, very challenging back then. So, thankfully, because of the growth we've experienced here and the, I think, the conservative positions this board's taken through the years, we're in, we should be thankful in the position that we're in. So, with that, before adopting the millage and budget resolutions, we must publicly announce the following. The name of the taxing authority is the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. The aggregate rolledback rate is 8.2465 mils. The proposed aggregate tentative millage rate of 8.8722 mils represents a 7.59% increase from the aggregate rolledback rate. The tentative millage rates to be levied are countywide general revenue 5.7309 mils, unincorporated area municipal services taxing unit 4.3745 mils, library services .5583 mils, voted general obligation debt for environmentally sensitive lands .0604 mils, voted general obligation debt for unincorporated area parks and recreation .0259 mils. At this point, it is appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the millage resolution as presented by staff.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, now the tentative millage resolution has been adopted, it is appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the budget resolution as presented by staff.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, so that concludes tonight's budget public hearing. The date, time, and place of the final public hearing will be 6:00 PM on Thursday, September 21st, 2023, in the County Commission Boardroom on the second floor of the County Center, 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33602. And again, thank you all for coming out this evening, and we're adjourned.